All right, good evening. Officially called the meeting to order seven o'clock here. Uh, the special uh, meeting for the uh, Strawberry Fields Public Hearing Wednesday, February twelfth. So in twenty-seven PM Town Hall, lower level meeting room. If you could just please rise up. All right, so the first thing on our agenda was updates from the chair. And this, this was just um, uh, Rod's had provided us with a checklist that uh, says um, as well as meeting and how we should be uh, proceeding through things. Just wanted to let you guys know. Uh, it's not anything different obviously than we've been doing before. It's just um, a way for all of us to make sure that the meetings are being flowed uh, properly and everything is in correspondence to national laws we have over here. And then uh, everything that we need voted on is all right here too, uh, and what requires about what does not. So go right into um, the public hearing. So we have um, the discussion and presentation by the Dayton Water District on availability of water. Can you see here? It appears to be about ten to fifty minutes. Wait, can I hear you? Oh, there it is. Okay, here we are. Jeff, if you need a second, uh, we can wait and go into the traffic first, or I know you just did. You ready?
Um, where are we?
Uh, just um, the first thing on our, our agenda was the presentation for the availability of water for the project.
Mr. Chairman, if everyone that's in this room signed that form page on this?
Um, I haven't.
All right, uh, Jesse, uh, you can start whenever you're ready.
All right. Um, so, we started the process of um, assessing what, where we are in the district, uh, what we have, uh, through environmental partners. Uh, we brought Mr. Adelsberg along, Chuck Adelsberg, uh, he's with Environmental Partners. Uh, they're our engineering firm helping us along. Um, so we, we contracted them to do a hydraulic model and a master plan. This was, set in motion before I, I had gotten there, but then it stalled a little bit. Uh, you know, the transition between superintendent. So it, it had a kind of a likely stall period and then I, I jumped with it. Obviously, we picked it up and, again, it's, it's, it's not a fast process because it's a giant enormous undertaking. You know, to assess the, the, we're not little anymore, so it is pretty big. Um, and so I brought along Chuck to try to, give you an idea where we're at with that process. We're not quite finished yet. Um, hoping late February, early March that assessment will be in. Um, that's kind of where we are. We want to, we want to be honest and forthright with everybody and, and see where we're at, uh, with the availability to give more water.
All right, uh, so first, Michelle, uh, if you may, if they were just, uh, read, uh, the letter that he sent us into the minutes, please, so they, um, give, so it's there for the minutes and the, um, of anyone present tonight can hear, uh, what the letter said.
Sure. So this is um, from January twenty-third, twenty-twenty. It says, uh, Dear Mr. Busby, the Dayton Water District understands that Mass Housing are working with the Town of Dayton's Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals on the Strawberry Fields Estates development, which is currently under review for potential construction. The town has approached the district to discuss the project and we are currently reviewing the water supply needs for the development. During our discussions with the town, we stated that dis- the district has contract, uh, contracted with our consulting engineers at Environmental Partners, EP Group Incorporated, to develop a hydraulic model of our water supply and distribution along with the, the subsequent water system master plan. As part of this project, EP and the district met with the Dayton Town officials on January ninth, twenty-twenty, to discuss the location and anticipated water demand requirements for the Strawberry Fields Estates development. Since EP is the preliminary stages of their evaluation, the district cannot confirm whether our water supply system has adequate water supply and/or pressures to properly supply the proposed development with acceptable domestic water supply and fire protection as required by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. EP anticipates completing their evaluation of our system and supply to the anticipated developments in Dayton within the next few weeks. We hope that this letter probably documents the current schedule of the Dayton Water Supply Evaluation of our system and the Strawberry Fields Estates development. Should you have any questions, please call me at five zero eight, eight two four nine three nine zero. Sincerely, Jeffrey Kinnan, Superintendent, Dayton Water District. Thank you very much.
And so Jeff, if there are anything else you need to add, or is that, is that it?
I mean, that, that's pretty much covers it. It's really, until this is completed, um, I don't feel comfortable. I feel like I'm putting residents at risk. Uh, fact of the matter is that we are a public safety, um, department and until I know the facts, I don't feel comfortable.
Yeah, if you want, I can just give you an overview of the project. Um, I appreciate you entertaining us tonight and, um, to echo what Jeff is talking about, the project that we're doing, as he had mentioned, it was, it was delayed and we're just in the calibration phase for the hydraulic model, which basically, um, we, we did some hydrant flow testing and now we're simulating the model to react the way the system does in the field by mirroring those conditions that we observed during that field program. And we're, we're almost there with the calibration. It's taken us a little bit longer than we had anticipated, but Jeff and his crew have been very helpful, um, for us in, in providing the information in timely manner. Um, but we're just not there yet with the model. Excuse me. So, we're moving forward. I have a meeting tomorrow actually with my team and we should be calibrating the model this week and then we'll look at, um, the, the development, this one and a couple more that we talked to the building inspector about that may be happening in the next five years. Basically, what the model will do is we'll simulate conditions and then we'll put water supply demands for the town on it currently and then with the developments that are going to happen in the next five years and we'll actually plan forward for the next twenty. So that once we have that calibrated model, we'll make recommendations for improvements in the system that'll adequately supply pressure and flow for domestic conditions and then fire protection as well. Um, so, um, the district's doing all the right things right now, uh, preparing this plan um, and just to make sure that not only that any future customers have the water that they need at the, at the pressures and the fire protection that they need, but also the existing customers. So, um, that's kind of in the nutshell of the project that's moving forward and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
If you have any here amongst the board, a question for the, um, for the water.
I'm sorry, your name is?
I'm Chuck Adelsberg. I work for Environmental Partners.
Jeff, I have one question.
Sure.
So you've got all your calculations in right now and, uh, uh, Jeff discussed everything you need for the Dayton Water District?
Yeah, yeah, it's just a question of us, um, moving forward and, uh,
You're welcome. So you think within a month, three weeks, four weeks?
I think, I think we should have the model calibrated within a month and I think that the water supply master plan with our recommendations and improvements should be done within two. But, um, I, uh, I, I provided some of the information for Jeff's letter there and I, at the time, I had anticipated that we'd have the model calibrated within two weeks. It's taken a little bit longer because we went into a couple of pickups. But, um, I, I foresee having the model done with the, and running the simulations to see whether this development has adequate water from the system within the next month or so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else who wants to vote for questions, more? All right, we're going to move on to, um, you discussed, uh, traffic study continued. We have, um, representative from, from the traffic, uh, consultant here to speak on the, uh, his planning on the traffic study. So let's come forward.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of board. My name is Faisal Subhutanyam with Niche Engineering. Uh, we, uh, we are retained by the zoning board to conduct a peer review of the traffic items relative to the site. And as a peer reviewer, definitely what we'll do is we'll review anything that comes out from the traffic engineer, uh, of the developer and, uh, review consistency with what, if it's compliance with current, uh, practices and then is consistent with the board's, uh, requirements and then, uh, the bylaws. We typically receive the initial studies from the, uh, from the traffic engineer reviewer. We issue our, our comments, uh, to the, uh, back and then we start having some discussions kind of behind, behind the scenes. Uh, then we don't kind of come in and trying to bore the board with the details of things. Well, we have done that. Uh, Green International was, uh, was the traffic engineer on behalf of the developer and, uh, we went back and forth with them multiple times. And, and as of now, we have come to a kind of, you know, final resolution on all the comments that we have issued. And, uh, and any outstanding items should not really prevent, uh, the site from being, uh, progressing, you know, forward. Um, and I just want to go over, uh, some of those comments that are remaining to be followed up as the design progresses. And, um, so one of, one of the, um, safety, uh, part of safety review and speeds on Route one thirty-eight, uh, that item is still kind of outstanding. It has to evolve down the line as the, you know, the site get their permits. And, uh, and the proponent basically has to coordinate with the town and with MassDOT. Route one thirty-eight in that area is owned and operated by MassDOT, so they are the owners. And the site will have to obtain permits from MassDOT, access permit. So technically, they have to go through the same process that we are going through right now in terms of traffic and traffic impacts. However, the desire of the town is to see some measures being taken, uh, to, uh, discourage, you know, to reduce speed. And those measures have to be approved by MassDOT. So what we are saying is that the developer will have to coordinate with MassDOT, part of the permitting process and then obtain, uh, you know, uh, have some measures installed. They can be done, you know, by the developer or in coordination with the town. Uh, we suggested that some discussion can be, uh, you know, uh, done is that the developer will, will probably give the town some funds maybe to use in the future, uh, to install such, you know, uh, like a, a kind of speed feedback sign for example, to indicate to the drivers. And those they have been, you know, now with the current technology, they're getting very small in size. I mean, very easy to install and they are very kind of, you know, it tells you, uh, they are very polite too. Uh, so if you are speeding and it says, please, you know, reduce your speed and, and if you are not speeding, it says thank you kind of thing. So, uh, but I think that would be a, a good thing for the area. Uh, and, um, the second one is the, the issue of the side distance. It, you know, the place, the place where we have the driveways right now, uh, there, there are, there's a lot of growth on, on the, uh, abutting properties. And then as you exit, there's a limitation on the side distance. And we suggested that as the design progresses, to establish those side distance lines. Is to draw them on, on the plan and to give you an indication, you know, if you have side distance limitation and also if you have any, um, encroachment on private property because some of the, the growth can be on a private property if it takes into it. So it has to be some coordination, uh, with the owners of the private property to clear that, you know, the line of sight. Uh, so that, that's gonna, an item, we'll continue on that. Uh, the, um, the, the third item is, has to do with really the, um, uh, the roadway, uh, in the area where we're providing for a bus turnaround and a bus shelter. In the earlier version, there used to be like a pocket of a parking area that parents can come in and stop and wait for their kids or, you know, drop them off. And the new version of the design, I think that, uh, that area disappeared. So what we're suggesting is that maybe parents, if they need to wait, they, they need a space probably right on the roadway, uh, to stop. But to accommodate that, there has to be some widening to provide that width of a pavement. And it can be like about eighteen for, for the standard parking stall. And, uh, and then in addition, provide for the number of lanes required on the, on the roadway itself. This area, I think it's, you know, it's, it's in this area right here. So I, you know, along the, the, this side or this side, you know, there can be a bit wider roadway to accommodate for, for the parking or stopping of parents. Uh, the other thing is what we did is the, um, uh, I'll, I'll go through the last one. So, so the last comment was, has to do with the, um, uh, number of parking required under the zoning bylaw for the, uh, for the townhouses. And, um, we, we made that comment and then because there was overlap in terms when we submit our comments and then when we receive the responses, uh, but that, that, that item has not been really fully addressed. Uh, so what we did, uh, we did today, basically, we didn't, uh, do that calculation ourselves. And, uh, we have thirty-eight townhouse units and that, and they are providing ninety-three parking spaces for those, uh, thirty-eight. And then the zoning, uh, regulation requires eighty-nine. So technically, they are providing more than what the zoning requires. So I would consider that, uh, item is really resolved. The, um, the second thing is the, uh, the circulation for fire trucks and emergency response on the roadway itself and also for the bus to come in and turn around and come back out. And, um, so they, we did receive a template before that shows the fire truck turning and, uh, and then there was no issues with that. And, uh, but that design has changed since the first time. And then we, what we ended up doing is doing ourselves a, um, providing a turning template for the same thing. Uh, just to kind of make sure. I'll, I'll hold it. So, um, so thi- this is the red line. This is basically the fire truck entering. Oh, thank you. So kind of the, the fire truck entering in and circulating, coming back out or, or if they want to continue along the routes. And they, they can, you know, do all the routing. So physically, it's doable. The only limitation is that the width of the road is a little bit tight. The truck does require a minimum of fifteen, uh, eleven feet to really for it, for the path travel. And then we are providing twenty-four feet cross section, my understanding, uh, one lane each direction, twelve and twelve. And we are suggesting that if that can be made twenty-six. And I think that's, that may be consistent with the planning board requirement. Uh, so, uh, and, and then in addition, you have like the sidewalks and, and the buffer of the grass buffer between the travelway and then the sidewalks themselves. And if that's kind of the case, I think the, the condition of the layout should be adequate to accommodate an emergency vehicle. Second one we did for the bus, coming in, turning around. That turnaround is adequate for the bus to come in and loop around and come back out. That's not, so there is no issue with that. So all these items, I would basically, we consider them as have been addressed. And then again, the design has, will be evolved eventually and then the detail of the design will be shown. And then there will be a second, basically, review. I mean, by the, the developer and their engineer of that, of those turning movements or looping around, uh, to be double checked and make sure that they are adequate. And then the other thing is like the design of the, at the, at the entryways, it, it needs to be, you know, done to accommodate coming in without engorging on Route one thirty-eight. And there are ways you can design those, you know, uh, the, the, uh, the tangents and the rate uses and all that stuff. So, uh, I, I think as it stands right now, basically, we, we feel that they have adequately addressed all the comments that we had and then definitely the project can proceed with the future details.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Can I join? Um, I'll, a couple of questions for you. First question is, and if this doesn't apply, feel, feel free to, if this applies. But when you did your traffic study at all, one of the concerns that we discussed early on was how it affects the stoplight and the pattern of traffic, or how many theoretically, how many, um, changes of lights would that change? For example, right now, a person may have to wait for one light change to, to transcend through. Did you do any kind of study to determine how that would affect the light at the intersection over here and how the traffic would back up?
The one at Central Street?
Yes.
And one thirty-eight?
Yes.
Yep. They did address that. They did, uh, some analysis. And, uh, that intersection itself is not in, fully compliant, uh, like for ADA accessibility or operation itself. So there is a room there to maximize the, the timing. However, I think that intersection is, in, in terms of age, uh, you know, it's really outdated. Now technology is much, you know, more responsive and so there is, um, a need to, uh, you know, at least by the state to look at that.
Do you have any kind of recommendations that you make?
We, we have made some recommendation, uh, we, we made some recommendation is, uh, part of, you know, they made some recommendation which we required that. I mean, what, that was one of our comments when they were preparing the report. And we asked them, it says, because initially we thought that, you know, if they make any recommendation, the site or the developer has to build those recommendations. And we said, no, it's not the intent. The intent is to have a, to kind of piggyback on their expertise and come up with recommendations that can be taken in the future. And then, uh, they made some recommendations. And then, you know, it would probably include some little widening, making sidewalks more accessible, uh, having wheelchair ramps updated and also maybe having turning lanes based on the number of, the volumes. And so that, when, when we kind of introduce adding a lane, it's based on, on number of vehicles that are turning and that movement. Uh, so there is a warrant for, for this requirement. Uh, so there, there was some recommendations, yes.
Also, um, you talked about the, the width of the, the twenty-four feet versus twenty-six feet. And I know in some of the information we received in the request for waivers, um, I believe there was a waiver request for the width of the street. And I think that the initial thought, um, the letter that we have on that part of the request and the recommendation was denied for a couple of reasons. One is because they potentially, eventually would like the roads to be, the internal roads to be considered public ways. And I think if I'm not mistaken, one of the reasons for the denial was that the twenty-four feet would not meet public, uh, the criteria to become a public way. Do you know what the, what the width of the road needs to be in order to be ultimately approved as a public way?
Yep. I think it has to be twenty-six feet. And, uh, that's need thirteen foot. So you have the sun line and then you have fifteen on each side. Technically, you have twelve foot travel lane, one foot shoulder, twelve foot, uh, travel lane and one foot shoulder on the other side. So thirteen and thirteen, twenty-six. I think that's a, a very difficult kind of width of roadway, uh, once it becomes public. Yeah.
Okay. Those are your questions for now. Thank you. Anyone else? Um, quick question. How receptive is Massachusetts to changes on one thirty-eight as far as one of those signs for the speed and, you know?
The, the, um, the project, I mean, the area is really, you know, you get town hall in there.
Right.
You got a lot of schools around here. So it's kind of the, the downtown area of Dayton, basically.
Yeah.
And they are very helpful in that. I mean, that, uh, we are, uh, they are receptive. Just a matter of, it needs to be talked to. You know, you really need to go sit down with them and they will offer what is feasible and what's not feasible or what they can do. And they, they do a lot of things every, in a lot of towns. Uh, you know, working with them in the town of Stoughton, for example, uh, we are doing, redoing Washington Street, making it complete street of, and where we provide bicycle lanes, we're providing sidewalks, uh, providing, uh, green space. Uh, and now, you know, you can have that, the green space is very popular, uh, to handle stormwater, you know, they kind of, and then you kind of, when you do the neck down around the corner of an intersection, you gain a lot of space there and make a green space out of it.
Right.
Uh, so, uh, they are very, uh, on board with that.
Thank you.
Another question.
David?
Um, I'm not sure if this is who I should be asking about this, but, um, I, I recently, uh, ran out of fuel. I had to walk that section, uh, last week. And it's very narrow all around those corners. Um, so Mass, you did get on the Mass Highway, but possibly a sidewalk because, um, not saying that this is a, a, a complete plan, but, uh, the petitioner put in here, he didn't really want to do like a playground, okay, and to the project. Not that he didn't want it, but the people that were going to be buying wasn't interested. They thought it was going to be a problem. So now we're going to have children that are going to be going through this project, walking. There is no edge on that road. It literally does a bank on both sides. Coming up to here, which we have a public playground right behind the town hall here. And we only have a blinking light, I believe. Uh, we don't even have, not just as a crosswalk.
That's it.
Yeah, so we, we don't have a white here, let the children cross over to this section here or any kind of sidewalk. I don't know. How do we get that rock to mass?
I thi- I think again, as we mentioned, it's parking to MassDOT, that would be very helpful. And if you look at the layout right now, you get sidewalk on, uh, on the, on the east side. You don't have sidewalk on the west side, right?
Right.
And, and definitely, uh, my, you know, that, my suggestion is to really look for sidewalks on both sides of the street, between Santa, uh, Santa Street and all the way up to the top of the hill, uh, which is north of the driveway, of the forty-five, where it's Strawberry Hill.
Yeah.
Uh, and I think, uh, you know, that, so you need to prepare something and then go, go sit down with MassDOT and suggest that. I mean, definitely, you know, with a playground, with a school, with everything else.
Just know that if you're gonna walk that road.
I agree. Yeah, it's very dangerous. So, and, and we have issues with speed there, right?
Yes.
So.
I forget what the developers said specifically for, they, they, they thought the numbers in their traffic study would be for numbers of cars coming in and out on a daily basis. Did you look at that and did you agree or disagree?
We, we agreed with that, with their, uh, because we follow a, a, uh, certain criterias, like, uh, we follow the, uh, recommendation by the Institute of Conservation Engineers. They have for all kind of land uses, we have the number of trip generated by, uh, expected to be generated by the site basically, and they follow that process, yes.
Okay.
Any more questions for the traffic? Anybody? All right, on that, thank you very much. Uh, next we're going to move on to, uh, review discuss revised development plan I submitted, uh, including a proposed waiver list of, of local rules, regulations and bylaws. So you kind of have something, um, I knew you were going to present regarding the, uh, in place.
Can I talk to Andrew first? Let me do this.
Yeah, why don't you do, um, just a brief, one, one, and a, and Peter can comment on how, if it goes or not.
Okay. All right. So, uh, we were receipt of, uh, additional comments from Mr. Williams for their few plans. And we went ahead and performed further drainage calculations and, um, actually put a lot of time into it. And it's pretty much designed at this point, the whole site, not just the area that's of concern over here. Um, because we have one basin where we have, have to redirect it to live in another area. So all the, all the, um, self-catch areas and design points have been looked at. Design will be a little bit more fine-tuning upon our design, uh, once we move on to the next part of the process. Um, so, um, Theodore sent the, the letter today saying, I don't think I saw what his comments are, but for the most part, I think he addressed everything, uh, he brought up.
Yes, I'll look again. Okay.
Um, I did submit a, a letter this morning. Um, I can go through the comments quickly. Some of these are still remaining from my last comment letter and some of them, uh, they're just sort of reminders. So I think that we make sure that we cover the decisions or conditions and, you know, as we go along with the project. The first one again is the issue whether you want both landscaping plans or not and whether that's appropriate for this level of the project. Um, again, comment number two regarding the sidewalks is just a reminder that we Again, comment number two regarding sidewalks is just a reminder that we make sure that they get included on the final design plans. Item three, where I talked about, since the project about a DEP zone hay water, a surface water groundwater supply area, that I feel we should get a little bit more information on that and confirmation that, you know, that we comply with that, with the discharge close to the zoning to end the areas of the project within the zoning.
On that one, we did go ahead and design that fire retention area. I noticed some of your comments there in this area here, and we got, you know.
Well, that actually relates to one of my other comments, because you're actually using, you're using that same area for stormwater reduction as theirs, and it can have two functions, I believe, so.
Just using it for treatment, so.
So you're not using it for any reduction of the stormwater runoff?
I mean, it'll be contaminated a little bit, it's not true, but that's kind of how we deal with stormwaters, the best way of practices, so we have two different ways that we're treating it for this out there. We're going to show our TSS rating of ninety-seven percent move, so I thought that, that was a spirit.
They were pretty, I would think that we're pretty close on that one, and certainly something to be handled in the, on that point, the design of that fire retention area, number nine, that, you know, that's one thing that should be finalized in the commission of the final construction plans. But I would like to, under number three, just to make sure that we're not missing anything on that. Item number four, something that I typically request, and which is in the planning board regulations, is catch basin inlet capacity calculation. They probably could be provided in the final construction plans, because it would just mean having another drain manhole or catch basin along the road, which would be hugely causing, you know, impact of. I'm still leaving the potential that groundwater money calculations may be required. Right now, the test pit information obtained indicates that it may not, probably won't be, but those aren't going to be in the final test pit information use unless the water health waves there, or requirement for a test pits affected by the water health itself, the stormwater committee.
We did well just step there on that one. We did have a third party go out and do test pits, and it's a fellow's absence, he was in the way, I believe, and ordered for us to get the data and calculations against the plans in the two weeks ahead of time, so we had that done.
Yeah, but it's more that the water health wants their agent out there, so that will have to be discussed, and, you know, moving forward from the final design part, if the water health has further objectives to that. Just, I, due to the sensitive nature of item number six, comment number six, due to the sensitive nature of this, I'd like to see, you know, forty-four percent TSS removal, you know, acquired for all the basins prior to, to that end.
Yeah, I don't have the count sheet for everything, but keep some catch basins and as far as usual.
Okay. If you can just confirm that with. And then, items seven and eight, I think are just some minor design errors that were made on the invert elevations used in the location of some of the outlet pipes, and will need to be corrected.
Yeah, let's add one in particular, number seven, I actually, number seven, I couldn't figure out, we'll talk offline, but number eight, I adjusted that, and that actually kind of helped the numbers a little bit.
Okay. I guess nine, we talked about. Number ten, I didn't pick this up in my original review, but you should be, when they do the stormwater calculations, they actually go running the water through the basins. Typically, you don't count the water, the storage volumes below the outlet pipes, because there could be successive storms where that volume would not be available, so I think you should adjust the calculations for that. I think we, number eleven is also a reminder, we need to discuss the capacity existing sewer system to handle additional sewer flows, and I think we'll run on to further discussions with all members on this. I just want to keep it in this, so we keep an eye on that one. The issue, number twelve comes down to, is, if I may point this out. There is a detention basin here that its outlet pipe runs down the street and then comes down, I believe it discharges down to this area.
And then down the road.
Yeah, it's down this road here, down this road. So, I mean, the question will come if the applicant wants this to be a public road. Typically, when that happens, the town assumes the responsibility of the standard catch basin drainage system that brings the stormwater to the basins. But now we have part of stormwater basin system within the roadway, so that may complicate any approval, you know, for that, of, you know, how the town would accept that.
We're trying to work in other towns where they would accept the roads, but they won't accept the drainage infrastructure, including the southern roads, so it depends on the floor.
So we'll have to discuss that further. Typically, on number thirteen, typically trash racks are provided on outlets. I mean, this is a detail that certainly can be provided in the final. Also, look, two-inch diameter outlet pipes are a little bit smaller, if we could increase the diameter, so it'll be less, that's a bit of clogging.
That's really just for dry, I want to make sure that it's not seventy-four.
Fourteen, actually, I duplicated with a traffic engineer, as I just reminded, he has addressed that, so I will not talk about that. One other issue is, let's see, there's a, well, there's a, there's a bus drop off here, and a guide rail that comes along here, so I just need to have that guide rail along the roadway to sit another twenty feet or so, just to provide some, you know, slope protection in that area, the minor item, but didn't want to miss it. And then I had a, just a general question, I'm just, can't remember if we addressed this in prior year, but will these basements, will these buildings have basements?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, and how are you going to handle any groundwater issues or a need for some pump? I think we want some information on that.
So what's the other projects where we try to keep basements above?
Typically, we keep the basement above the water table, so.
The bottom of the basement.
The bottom of the basement, so we do, while, whereas we do need some pump, like they're very, very operational.
They're like the well forms, you know, so they don't just come back and forth.
If you run out onto the street.
It won't, it won't be running. Actually, we don't even.
The parag是以 Bishop on a few of these, I'm sorry, I'm probably talking on the line, I shouldn't be talking on the other, but the parag是以 on a few of these things, you are way out of the ground, and you're going to be bringing in, filling adequately, making a swell towards other pieces of property, and I personally don't see how that could be done. You might want to just relook in that area over here.
Which, sorry, which houses?
It's right here, over by the bus stop.
Dave, you want some?
Yeah, nope, come on, come on, right, right in there.
Yeah, so those are the houses that, he's saying, the bottom of the basement's going to be above the water table.
That's what I'm saying, the parag是以 the land.
Yeah.
And the bottom of that, if I'm not mistaken, is you're only four feet underground.
But you're looking at a proposed, you're looking at a proposed parag是以 or existing?
Yeah, well, what it was submitted to us.
What is it, proposed or existing?
It's existing.
Greg, is that proposed grades or existing grades?
We have the existing.
The grade Greg is referring to?
There's a few houses over there. I noticed that parag是以 drops dramatically, and that you're going to be bringing in adequately fill to keep the fourth floor under grade and still keep the foundation.
Right, now it would be the proposed, now it would be the proposed grade, right?
Yeah. Yep, we have proposed grades on there. They're up grade, but they're not fine grade for each.
So is he referring to existing grades or proposed grades?
Proposed.
Okay. It looks like kind of the area, great.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure. But I mean, we can.
Somewhere right in here?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we can certainly consider that the final plans should not, should show locations of some outlets and.
I just don't want to see water running from the houses into the streets, you know what I mean? That's all I'm saying.
So that can be a condition of a, of a potential approval.
Or, I'm going to, but it's.
I try to avoid it, yes. This is all, this is the high point right here, this is the cut back up here, so the water's.
All right, any more questions? I want to off the board, Peter. All right, thank you very much. Next, regarding this case, we have boards and committees, infrastructure availability. We've had a number of boards reach out to us on our town. We can start with Conservation Committee, if Michelle, you can read that in a brief extension minutes. Um, yes.
Address to Jonathan Gray, Office Manager. Jonathan, after reviewing the latest revised plans for Strawberry Fields Estate forty-B subdivision, the Conservation Committee asks that the zoning board of the fields not waive the conservation regulations, bylaw, and policies as requested in items numbered sixty-three through sixty-nine of the waivers submitted for Strawberry Fields Estate forty-B subdivision. The revised plan is, if approved without changes, to destroy the functions of two potential rental pools, threaten the viability of one certified rental pool, allow existing functioning, how do you say it? Wetlands to be incorporated into four lots adjacent to Blueberry Lane and a portion of, do you mind if?
The wetlands?
Thank you. Wetlands to be paved over by Huckleberry Lane. All of these are unacceptable to this commission. The plan on sheet twelve shows Blueberry Lane surrounding and stone riprap encapsulating a PVP in four dwellings cutting off access to the wetlands, the bird rigs and injured rigs and other wildlife spawned in the PVP need to access further survival. This design would destroy the functions of this PVP. Blueberry Lane and the proposed dwelling surrounding it could be eliminated. The plan on sheet twelve proposes two dwellings within close proximity to a PVP within two blocks to the morally side of Strawberry Lane and what appears to be a stone wall surrounding most of the pool essentially rendering it useless. At a minimum, these proposed lots should be declared open space, no dwellings and no stone wall, and even then a cloudy future for the PVP. The long-term viability of the certified rental pool shown on page twelve of this plan is also threatened by the construction of the planned townhouse complex, sewer force main, riprap stone slope, and grade changes, all within fifteen feet of the CBT, eliminating the unpaved area of the center of the paved parking areas and redesigned parking spaces would provide another twenty-five feet of breathing space for this CBT. The Huckleberry Road design should be changed so that the delin, delin, no, delinian, wetland, how do I say that, is not altered. All of these planned changes and more could be readily accomplished by the zoning board of the fields denying the conservation waiver requested by the applicant. Our bylaw description of rental pool dimensions and setbacks would force positive changes in the design of this subdivision and its impact on the very sensitive resource areas surrounding it. Sincerely, Charles Mallow, Member Clerk, that is Conservation Committee, oh, Commission, sorry.
Thank you. And then the next, reading to the minutes, this is coming from the sewer department.
So, dear ZBA members, the Town of Dayton Board of Sewer Commissions requests that the ZBA deny the request by Strawberry Fields Estate for waivers on numbers one, two, four, one, one, and eighteen, three, four, and one, ten. Regarding waiver number one, the Commission strongly believes and hopes that the ZBA agrees, the knowledge and expertise regarding the public sewer system lies with the commissioners, superintendents, and consulting engineers. The decisions regarding all aspects of sewer extensions should therefore be left to the sewer commissioners. Regarding waiver number eighteen, the Commission requests that a waiver be delayed until the proponent is certain that their plans for discharge into the public sewer system has been approved. Respectfully submitted, Diane Curtis, Office Manager, on behalf of the Board of Sewer Commissioners.
This next one, we have, I'll just, quite lengthy, this is coming from the Stormwater Committee. Date of February tenth, two thousand and twenty, Jim and Karen, Board Members, regarding requests for waivers related to stormwater at Strawberry Fields. At a special meeting of the Stormwater Committee held on Thursday, February sixth, two thousand and twenty, it was unanimously voted to notify you of our recommendation that you do not approve any waivers related to the stormwater, whether they are listed under the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, or any other board, committee, or commission. Background, the Board of Selectmen acting on the recommendation of the Board of Health approved the creation of the Stormwater Committee over a year ago. The Boards of Selectmen and Health felt that one committee should be totally responsible for everything related to stormwater. The creation of a Stormwater Committee was in response to the changes in require, changes in requirement regulations issued by the Environmental Protection Agency, the federal agency that has pharmacy for everything, the stormwater in Massachusetts. The Department of Environmental Protection, DEP, a state agency, follows the rules and regulations of the EPA. To meet EPA requirements, that a notice of intent stormwater management plan, illicit discharge detection plan, be prepared in two thousand and nineteen, along with the, along with the municipal separate stormwater system report. The Boards of Selectmen and Health determined that the Stormwater Committee should be comprised of individuals who must meet EPA requirements in their everyday duties, whether town employees or members of boards, committees, or commissions. To provide the most experienced, experienced and knowledgeable appointees for Stormwater Committee, the following individuals positions were identified. Nancy J. Goular, representing for support Selectmen, Thomas Ferry, Superintendent of Streets, James Aggie, our Building Commissioner, William Fournette, Chairman of Conservation Commission, Tom Pyers, representing the Planning Board, and Todd Kelly, Health Agent, representing, yeah, representing the Board of Health. The Stormwater Committee is recognized by the EPA and DEP as the official contact in town that has total responsibility for stormwater activities, including but not limited to submission of all reports, public education and outreach, enforcement of the stormwater bylaw, and accompanying rules and regulations. Page two. Two thousand and seven, and the town was fined for, fined by the EPA for noncompliance and violations by not taking the actions required in the MS four over a period of years. The Stormwater Committee takes the responsibility seriously and has taken steps to meet the EPA requirements, so that the town will not incur fines again. On January twenty-fourth of the twenty, Mrs. Goular had a conversation with Newton Heder of EPA, during which she asked if any changes had been made to the regulations that would allow a town through its Board of Appeals or Stormwater Committee to waive any stormwater requirements, whether bylaws, rules, or regulations that may be requested by a developer of a proposed forty-B development. Miss Heder's reply was that there was, was that there had been no changes in the regulations, and that forty-B developments are not exempt from bylaws or accompanying regulations promulgated in a community and approved by the EPA. The Planning Board's regulations regarding stormwater are based on the town's stormwater bylaw and regulations. We have no new requirements or additional conditions. Our concerns relate to the pub, to public health and safety issues. Basements and roadway must be above the water cable across the entire site. Test pits should be witnessed by the Board of Health or its agents. The sidewalk that was planned last year was postponed due to the threat of triple E. We would like that sidewalk to be scheduled as soon as weather permits, while it is still cold enough for mosquitoes to not be active. Stormwater permit, as well as its terms, conditions, and inspections, should be under the authority of the Stormwater Committee and not the ZBA. Therefore, we ask the zoning board of appeals to deny any and all waivers requested that relate to stormwater as mentioned above. The Stormwater Committee has a record of working cooperatively with contractors and proponents of a small, of small and large projects, such as the construction of the north campus of Frisell County Agricultural High School and Borrego Solar Farm off Elm Street. Both of these projects will have a large impact on our town, and both are unique in the relationship to the terrain, elevation, soil types, and other natural elements that we, as a Stormwater Committee, must take into consideration when reviewing plans and working out details to allow these projects to go forward while protecting the town and preventing errors that could result in fines from the EPA. The EPA has worked closely with the town since the initial fine and has always helped with any questions or technical advice that has been solicited. We call upon the EPA as we work with the opponents of Strawberry Fields, should the need arise. We will not allow the town to be placed in a position that could result in fines for noncompliance from the EPA. Thank you for your consideration of this request. We will provide any. We will provide any additional information that the, uh, ZB A may need in, uh, in order to decide this matter. Respectfully submitted, uh, Nancy Gougarre Chairman and Thomas J. Ferry, clerk. That's, again, that's one of the stormarter. And then, uh, Jonathan, if you could just inform us on the, um, packet that we have here from the planning board.
Sure, uh, so I think you're.
One of those, uh, interview for anything.
Yeah, so, so that's actually for a later agenda item. This is, uh, after the, this, for the, uh, RFPs for engineering expenses, which is.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I buzzed with everything else, that's my fault, okay. So then, uh.
So this would be the correct.
And this is just, um. Tim Ryan, he's, uh, the chairman of, uh, the planning board. And this is John, uh, sent to us to grade twelve, two thousand and twenty. Uh, Jim and Karen, in response to Jacob Frisco Engineering's waiver list for the above referenced matter, the planning board respectfully submits the attached waiver list response as well provide the following statement. In two thousand and eighteen, the planning board received, reviewed and decided on the applicant's conserv- uh, conservation subdivision. Listed two years ago in May two thousand and eighteen, the planning board voted unanimously, unanimously to, uh, deny approval of a forty-three lot conservation subdivision, and that was, um, quote, uh, cited, uh, May second, two thousand and eighteen minutes of the planning board. From the onset, the Dayton Health Agent, Mr. Pilling, has said, quote, groundwater is a serious issue for this site that affects everything, stormwater collection and runoff, roadways, basins, et cetera. The board's peer review engineer, Peter Williams of ZB A, raised his concern that the subdivision plan did not show lots, um, with a hundred foot by a hundred foot building area, which cannot include, uh, wetlands, setbacks or buffer zones. The purpose of setbacks and buffers is not only to protect the wetland, but also to protect the public water supply, as much of the site contains Zone A areas that are attributable to the public watershed. The consensus of the planning board at this time was that the site could accommodate approximately, quote, to the, uh, two dozen units, half of which have been proposed without violating the setbacks and buffer zones. And then, this is, uh, two thousand and nineteen ZB A review of the forty B project. Instead of waiting for the mandatory one-year cooling off period, applicant applied to mass housing just a month after the planning board's denial. In fact, the C forty B plan is dated April tenth, two thousand and eighteen, which was during the planning board's hearing on the conservation subdivision, nearly a month before the vote. In other words, the applicant had already designed the C forty B alternative, um, before even waiting for the planning board to vote, uh, to vet and vote on the conservation subdivision. The initial forty B application was for ninety-two units, twice the dens- twice the density, uh, that was applied for in the initial conservation subdivision. The project has grown even more since then. The plans that have changed while ZB A, uh, now have the latest version, has six, a hundred and sixteen units, including fifty-two single family homes, thirty-three townhouses and three buildings, um, eight, sorry, uh, thirty-eight townhouses, indoor buildings and twenty-eight, uh, twenty-six cottages. Developer's intention is to have the roads adopted by the town of Dayton, but the plans show them to be, uh, substandard because they would not be built on the town's standards. Sincerely, Timothy Ryan, uh, chairman of the planning board. And, uh, Margaret, is the point of where we don't each read with, uh, every single one of their comments?
I think that my suggestion would be, as you review each of the waiver requests, we should read into the record what the planning board's recommendation is on each of them.
Okay.
And then we'll have that, see our, what our recommendation is, so they got the public aware of it.
Okay.
That's what they did, I mean, you can explain, what they did, what they cracked, the waiver requests that have been submitted and provided comments or recommendations to some of them, not all of them. So, if there was some that, if there was no recommendation, I would just send this thing, no recommendation.
Okay. Um, is there any discussion, uh, Jonathan, I thought it was R, you corrected us those.
I believe so.
Is there any, uh, discussion amongst the board, um, related to any of these comments that we received tonight from, from our town boards?
Uh, just kind of like, should you ask?
Well, we, I have also, well, I have a letter from Jacob Frisco Engineering concerning the, uh, concerns I had with the, uh, drain line going, the downstream drain line for this project. Um, and they impute that they've looked at it and find it satisfactory. Um, I would also just entertain that, uh, I will contact the, uh, Tom Ferry to confirm that he had no, you know, recollection of any, you know, flood impact at the downstream end of that drain line.
It's a letter from, uh, Frisco Engineering, this is dated January twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty. Jim and Karen, members of the zoning board of appeals, on January twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, uh, JDE performed additional investigation into the drainage system in Somerset Ave, vic- in the vicinity of eight hundred and forty Somerset Ave. The purpose of the investigation work was to determine the points of connection, confirm the, uh, indoor elevations and also the point of discharge per a comment from the board's reviewer, uh, board's review engineer, Peter Williams, BE of ZB A. The source of the water entering the drainage system in this area from the project site is the A series wetland on the west side of Somerset Ave, north of eight forty and south of, uh, number eight hundred. There is a twelve, uh, twelve inch RCP pipe, uh, set in a stone head wall, which is not, oh, sorry, excuse me, which is connected to the catch basin of the west side of Somerset Ave. JDE confirmed that this pipe does have the positive slope into the catch basin. The catch basin has two outlet pipes, a twelve inch RCP with the invert of, um, quarter of an inch to, uh, sorry, uh, with the invert quarter inch below and, uh, twelve inches RCP inlet and a twelve inch HDP E outlet pipe with the invert of one point, uh, eight feet above the twelve inch RCP inlet. This HDP outlet connects to the drain manhole on the east side of Somerset Ave. JDE does not know the status of the twelve inch RCP outlet pipe, as we could not find where it connects to. From the drain manhole, there is a twelve inch HDP outlet pipe, which connects to another drain, uh, another drain manhole on the east side of Somerset Ave approximately eighty-five, uh, to the south. From this structure, there is an, there is an eighteen inch HDP E outlet, which is connected to a concrete flare and section approximately three hundred and fifty feet to the east. This is the outlet for the existing street drainage system. It is a free-flowing, uh, it is a free-flowing outlet with no obstruction. Please note, the plans have been, uh, updated with the new, with the new indoor elevations obtained and the pipe information. Please contact me immediately if, uh, at five oh eight nine two eight four four zero zero, if you have any questions or require additional information. And this is from Frisco Engineering. All right, you guys have anything, uh, that you would like to address regarding anything that we've always heard this evening?
Sure. Again, for the record and for those of us that have not met, Chris Pragastino, counsel for the applicant. We received, uh, much of that correspondence this afternoon. And fortunately, I think, uh, much of what was just recited to the board represents a summary of all of the issues that this board has already been presented with and that has considered in the context of the hearings that we've had over the last six plus months at this point. So, I, I don't think that there's really much to respond to, uh, line by line, as far as some of the comments. I think we heard generally, please preserve our local bylaws. Um, and that is what we've been working on over the last several months is, you know, trying to figure out if there are any critical local issues of concern that would identify a specific local bylaw that this board, in consultation with the other boards and after receiving their comments, would say, hey, developer, we want you to look at that in detail. But, um, I, I don't think anything that I heard in those, uh, letters or what was able to review in these letters this afternoon, um, rose to the level of that. I, I heard general concerns, again, about stormwater. I heard general concerns, again, about the preservation and protection of wetlands. I heard general concerns about, um, something that came up very, very early on in the process is, uh, local sewer and water capacity. And I understand the water department is, is doing some research on their own. And as you know, the developer has offered to assist with, with that process. But, um, as far as whether or not this board is prepared to, uh, issue a comprehensive permit, I didn't see anything that, that would suggest that, no, now's not the time to go forward with that. You know, there's currently, uh, no moratorium in place on those two, uh, specific resources in town as far as water and sewer. I know there are concerns that, hey, we're at capacity and, you know, it's really close, but, um, at this point, we're in line like everyone else. You know, this project can't be treated any different than anyone else. And, um, you know, it's nothing that would rise to the level of, of a denial on the issue of water and store. If, in fact, it was actually determined that, um, there was insufficient capacity, even under those circumstances, the law and the regulations is very clear that that would not, uh, be justification for a denial. The town cannot use inadequate local infrastructure as grounds for denial unless they point to something specific within that, uh, inadequate infrastructure that it couldn't be obtained. But then it would be incumbent upon the town to seek a mass works grant or, or some other state grant or federal grant to try to, uh, upgrade that resource, understanding that, you know, Dayton has encountered a lot of development over the last several years. And the applicant, and, you know, we're, we're going to propose, uh, and, and encapsulate all of these, uh, discussions that we've had over the last several hearings, but the applicant is going to suggest in the permit that we will be obligated to assist in the product, in the application for a mass works, uh, grant, to try to assist with funding some of that infrastructure. But as far as this board's charge under forty B, um, you know, I didn't hear anything that would support a denial. The other comment that I heard repeatedly was concern about having the roads accepted as, um, town roads. That's not something that this board can decide in its decision anyway. That's a legislative act, the town meeting has to do that. And, um, essentially, we feel as though, as proposed, these roads are adequate enough for the town to vote to accept, but again, that doesn't happen now. So, you know, to, uh, put a condition in that we will never seek, uh, acceptance wouldn't be something that, we, we could talk about that. I mean, if that's the type of condition that you want to impose, that's something we could, we could evaluate, but generally, that's something that's just deferred for a later date. And if, if the town sees fit to accept them, um, generally what happens over time is you have a lot of taxpayers there. And the taxpayers are, are paying to, uh, have things like plowing and, and trash pickup services and, and roadway repair. And, you know, over time, pressure mounts and, and a road that is, is generally, to planning board's standards, would get accepted. But again, not, not for, not for this permit. So I think we can table concerns regarding that. Otherwise, you know, if, if there's any specific issue that the board heard that wasn't previously raised, I think, you know, the conversation that we had the last hearing was we wanted to avoid repetitive discussion in these hearings. But if there was something novel like tonight, we, we heard a novel concern about, uh, potential foundations intercepting groundwater. First we've heard of it, I don't necessarily think it, it's problematic. I mean, this developer doesn't build projects where you have a sub-pump dumping water in the front lawn. Just, it, it's not going to happen in our development. But, um, now that we've heard that concern, um, you know, we'll go look at the, the plans and see where that might be a concern. And you might be able to put, and we'll look at it, but you might be able to put a condition that, you know, foundations will not intercept groundwater. If they do, the following, uh, provisions will be applied to ensure that you can hot dump and sub-pump water into a front lawn. My parents' house does that, it's, it's bad. So, only in April, but in any event. That was one of the novel concerns that I, that I heard this evening. Otherwise, as far as general civil, I, I think from both the perspective of, of the town's, uh, general civil peer review engineer and, um, as far as, uh, the traffic peer review, since another one of those real major concerns that we've heard throughout the process is one thirty-eight. What do we do with one thirty-eight? And we have a plan for that. The developer is offering to fund the mitigation measures that we are going to propose to MassDOT. And the idea is we go in together. It's, it's an unsafe condition or, or concerns have been raised about the safety of this condition as it exists today. So, we're proposing to, uh, fund measures and approach MassDOT together in a cooperative man- manner to try to make that stretch safer generally with speed feedback devices, warning signs, flashing lights. You know, we, I think there's some commentary in there about a crosswalk to get across to the town field. So, I'm, I'm working to craft how we would propose that type of condition to look. And obviously, the board would have some feedback on that. But all of these things that, that were raised, um, are things that we've already discussed. I mean, there were a few tidbits in there as far as, um, things that would be how the law is applied under chapter forty B, for instance, whether or not, you know, we need to go appear before, uh, the, the sewer commissioner, we need to appear before separate stormwater, uh, uh, agency in town. I think, you know, there may have been some confusions, some confusion about how the law is applied in that sense, um, in that this board has jurisdiction over local bylaws. So, uh, to the extent, something that we're missing or that the civil engineers have missed, that the stormwater, uh, committee says, hey, we have a bylaw that addresses this specific issue. And, and we want that bylaw looked at in the context of this project, then that's fine. But, but don't say, don't waive any stormwater, uh, bylaws. Just for instance, the ti- the type of things that a local stormwater bylaw applies to is the slope of, uh, basins. And, you know, our basins propose a so- a slope that's, that's safe, but the local bylaw requires a much bigger slope, uh, rise over run that would just expand the size of it. So where you're developing in a compact area, you propose facilities like this that, essentially, the idea of forty B is that those stormwater bylaws are exclusionary as far as allowing for development. They, they, they restrict development. So forty B says, look, if there's something specific that that is going to address, then we'll look at it. But otherwise, it's just exclusion, exclusionary zoning, the state stormwater management regulations apply and, and those are considered, um, the gold standard as far as construction in the Commonwealth. So, you know, keep in mind, this project has wetlands on site. Storm, uh, compliance with the stormwater management regulations is compulsory for this project. And there's a separate review process where the CONCON, that's, and I always say this is, that's the one area where another town agency gets, quote unquote, another bite at the apple. They review compliance, strict compliance with the stormwater management regulations. We can't override that. Now, their bylaw, I'm sorry, their letter that we just got today said that they had some concerns about, uh, specific run-off pools. So, the State Wetlands Protection Act, um, does not protect run-off pools outside of the extent of the wetland. So we're proposing construction up to the wetland in many areas. And I think that's what the CONCON has cited, and they said, you know, don't do that. But we talked about early on where this development site is protecting in perpetuity the rest of the property which is shown on the plans. We feel as though that, uh, things like protecting a few of those run-off pools is not going to outweigh local concerns for the development of housing and the development of this project. It's, it's a, it's a ton of land. And, you know, there, there was, we had an exchange on that. We don't need to revisit that exchange, but we had an exchange on that. And just since I received this letter, um, I figured I'd, I'd raise it and say, we did have some discussion about that. The response was, well, that's going to be protected anyway, it's wetlands or something to that effect. But, you know, we, we talked about these issues. So, um, the goal now is, again, if, if you've heard anything specific that you think is, is something novel that we haven't discussed, then we're absolutely prepared to engage in those discussions, and, and, you know, find solutions. But otherwise, I think the goal at this point is to identify if there are local concerns that haven't been addressed and figure out how to, you know, if, if it rises to the level of a denial, then Marguerite can advise on that. But if it's something that we can discuss in, in terms of how to craft a condition, or you might say, Fisher, I need you to do this, and we might say, all right, let's talk about it, or no, it's just not going to work, that's where we are in the process at this point. So with that, I, I turn it back to the board. You know, if there remain specific issues that, uh, the board wants to see addressed or, or hashed out, you know, let's, let's work on those.
Yeah, David.
Can I have a comment to the question?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, my comment first is going to be specific.
So, my comment first is going to be specifically related to the road system within the development. And here's my concern before the public meeting eventually, whatever date that ultimately comes to a close, whether it's in March, April, May, whatever, is that as proposed right now, there's a better than even chance, at least an even chance, that those roads inside the development might not meet the criteria for becoming public way. Why is that important? It's important because as the developer knows, and the developer did support the residents, by the way, and I want to make that clear, the developer was very supportive of the residents having the development over at Sylvia Way. Have those roads become public ways once it was completed. But that was a difficult fight for the developer as well as for the residents to have that become a public way. He was supportive, but it was a very difficult fight. Having said that, the development that's currently almost completed, Stode Ridge, is going to be, is equally a difficult fight, if not a more difficult fight for a variety of potential reasons to have that become a public way. My concern is that if it's not etched in stone, that the developer is going to, and this may require some revisions in your plan, to meet that 26-foot parameter to help offset the concerns about public way amongst other things, potentially the water mitigation that we talked about earlier that was mentioned as well. That makes a huge difference, not only for whether or not it's considered a public way. You're right, there is pressure over time because of trash collection and because of other things. But it doesn't mitigate snow removal. It doesn't necessarily mean that a bus has to come in there in the meantime because it's not a public way. So there are other factors that play their potential. There may be factors that play if accidents happen, whether or not the police can come in if there are vehicle accidents because it's a private development and not public roads. So even that, to that extent, there's difficulty. Also, that makes a huge difference for the HOA fees. Eventually, when the development is finished, the developer is long gone. And all of the residents, including the forty B residents who are in lower income, have HOA fees. If they have to be responsible for maintaining that road system and everything related to that road system because it's never going to be approved as a public way, that's a significant harm, in my opinion, to the forty B residents who are going to be there. So I caution the voters of this committee to keep that in mind and that that needs to be made a condition, including the width, very important, before the public hearing closes. Another condition I would mention and ask the developer about potentially is radon. So there are a number, I don't know how many of these units are going to call for basements. But I do know, and as we all know, a significant cause of lung cancer, forms of lung cancer, is radon. And what I'd like to hear from the developer now, especially considering the area that these will be in, where there potentially is a higher risk for radon gas exposure simply because of where it's being built and what's under the ground there, what the developer has planned to mitigate radon. Is the developer, for example, willing to put radon detectors in every home? Is the developer willing to mitigate through potential methodology, you know, whether it require a filtration system, an air filter system in the basements, whatever it might be, a fan system in the basements to mitigate that? I know that that is an issue right now in other developments in the town. And I don't want to have its rear ugly head later if people say, well, we didn't know, the developer didn't inform us, et cetera, et cetera. So if the developer could address that, please.
Mr. Chairman, you want to address those issues? So, as far as radon, that is not something that would be identified as a local concern or a concern for this project. As far as mitigation measures, there are things that you can do. But in terms of writing into this permit, we're looking at things that are implicated by Dayton's bylaw. So I'm unaware of any local bylaw that Dayton has that would regulate radon. And yes, I can appreciate the concern generally. But where we're that far into this process, I think we really do need to try to narrow the discussion to things that are of local concern because radon is a concern generally speaking. And the developer, as a matter of practice, is not going to sell 100 houses that have radon because there are a myriad of other issues that are going to come with that. So, it's something that, that's where the developer and its relationship with the buyer handles that issue. But as far as this board, it, you know, if the board feels differently as a group, please let me know. But that's not something that I think is for discussion at this point.
My concern there, if I can argue this with you for a second, is that...
I prefer not to argue with you.
Why don't we argue? I mean, how about discuss?
Well, we've discussed a lot of things and we're really trying to move to local concerns.
I guess through the chair, the comment you made was that the developer can work that out with the individual buyer, which is kind of, I don't disagree with that. I just want to know if there are any measures the developer can take.
Oh, there are, absolutely.
If the developer could explain what they might be so that we're aware of what measures the developer could take.
So if, and I won't speak for Fisher, but in my experience, understanding that if radon is discovered at high concentrations in the basement of a house, you can put in an air exchange system that will essentially suck it out so it doesn't permeate up through the basement into the living space. And...
Yeah, sure. We, as a matter of practice right now, we made it a standard procedure to, in every house that we build right now, including these houses, we install a reserve pipe that goes straight from the basement that's tied into the sump area where the sump area has proliferated pipe throughout underneath the floor. Okay? We install that as a standard procedure as part of our plumbing. The plumber installs one pipe and it goes all the way to the roof. Now, not every house has a radon issue. So, we install this. If the minute a radon issue is discovered, just a little blower is installed onto that pipe that we install and destroying, that's it.
That's what I was looking for as an answer.
Yeah, and Mr. Gale, I apologize if I sounded as though, you know, I was becoming impatient with those types of comments. But I just think we really, this has been an extended detail-oriented process and we've gotten into a lot of granular issues regarding the development of housing generally and the development of this housing. So, we're coming towards the end of the process. I really want to be respectful of everyone's time and focus on what this board is charged with doing, which is reviewing matters of local concern.
Does the developer have any thoughts on the road?
So, as far as the road, building to planning board standards is not feasible for this development. It's generally not feasible for most forty B developments. The roadway that is shown is consistent with other chapter forty B roadways that are developed throughout the state, including projects in Dayton that you're familiar with and I know members of the board are familiar with. We can't redesign the project at this stage. We proposed this roadway profile from inception. The issue or the question of acceptance of the roadway has come up before. And I think we've given a similar answer. It's coming up again tonight. And the answer is no, we can't redesign the roadway. The consequences of that beyond just reconfiguring the site, it would essentially require redesign of the stormwater management system because you are dramatically increasing the amount of impervious area and a myriad of other consequences that flow from that. So, no, we can't redesign the roadway. We cannot design it to planning board standards. I would say there are a couple things that hopefully mitigate your concern is that the town has accepted a roadway like this. And whether it was a fight or not, the town accepted on another development at the Pines which had a similar chapter forty B, I'm calling it a chapter forty B roadway, but let's just call it a non-planning board compliant roadway. And ultimately, that was accepted. If it's not accepted as a public roadway, the law actually provides for a mechanism whereby the town can agree to do snow plowing and trash pickup on the roadway without actually accepting repair obligations and the obligation to maintain the road as a public obligation. So, there are all sorts of measures the town can take. And again, as far as homeowner fees for the inhabitants, part of it is, when it is a private roadway, for trash pickup and things like that. So yes, there's a cost there. I think the idea is that, you know, there are enough units that it mitigates some of the expense, so.
And as far as the HOA, yes, it is a burden on affordable buyer or the non-affordable buyer, the market rate buyer. But as far as everybody's information, that HOA fee is factored. If the HOA fee was zero, the price would have been higher, you see? So because the payment is fixed, so...
For the affordable units.
For the affordable unit. So if there is HOA, HOA fee is a hundred dollars, then the price will go down so that the payment is a hundred dollars less. So it's all taken into account. And every single buyer who bought from us, from any project that we have that has an HOA, we disclose the HOA, we disclose the fee, we give them the HOA documents as part of that contract so they cannot say, oh, we didn't know. We don't tell them, go look on record. We say, this is it, it's part of your agreement. So nobody can say, oh, I didn't know the town is not going to accept it or I have to pay a fee. It's already in the contract. Everybody knows it.
And as I said, Fisher, you were very proactive in supporting the residents.
No, I understand.
I totally, I don't discount that at all and I don't take that lightly. What I'm trying to do is find the ways to avoid conflict.
Is it true that the initial HOA fee includes the plan of mechanism to maintain and repair the roads?
It includes the reserves. It includes, first of all, the snow removal and the maintenance of the...
Over a long period of time.
Of the detention ponds. But it also includes a reserve for replacement reserve for the future.
So if anything...
10% reserve replacement.
If anything, when the road gets accepted, the HOA fee goes down or it goes up?
Before I turn it over to the public input for this, I want to go to Peter Williams and Marguerite. Do they have any comments on the...
Well, I just want to respond to the latest, those comments on the construction of the roadway. I heard a couple of times stated that the roadway will not be built to the planning board standards. That with regard to potential width of the roadway and some minor issues for alignment and, you know, implementation of the law configuration. It's my understanding through this whole process that the roadway will be constructed to the structural standards of the planning board. So we'll have the same durability of other places within the town because we don't want, you know, overburdening the future of the ownership of the property.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And then, Marguerite?
I should give you some assurance as well.
Do you have anything immediate you wish to address?
Not right now.
Okay. So just, I can just, the public, I just say name for the record, Paul McAdams.
Tim Adams, River of the Planning Board Chair, also Chairman of the Park and Recreation Commission. This question is in regards to the recreation aspect of things. Is that I know the area, I know the side I'm walking on this child. There is potential for some passive recreation. My question is, will there be any type of recreational activity for those residents inside of the development? Because our concern at Park and Rec is to have children look at development, walking up 138 on a blind hill in order to pass over and use this recreational facility that is outside the back lawn of our yard. So that's our concern with the committee. Now, in regards to that, is that developer willing to build sidewalks at a distance of 2,500 feet, going up 138, leading up to this facility? So it's safe for these residents and these children to access this unit? That's our question. That's our major concern. So, I'd like to see if it all possible, if there'd be some type of passive recreation inside the facility and maybe a small playground for those children. Because we put the onus of responsibility on Stode and Lengyer across the street to build a playground for $25,000 within the confines of that facility. And that developer agreed to that. That playground has been built. And that playground was only built with the stipulation that a CO would accompany that building of that playground. So, that's our main concern, Park and Rec wise. As a member of the planning board, I heard the concerns of our engineer, Mr. Williams. You had received the list of our recommendations and answers to the questions of the waivers. And yes, that is a concern because, and within the development, width of roads matters in regards to emergency access for vehicles, police and fire passing by in both directions, if necessary, within the confines of that development. And will not be able to have the width enough for large fire trucks if they have to pass each other within the size of the confines of that street. So that's a concern that I have myself. So as I say, you know, we have addressed the waivers and given our answers. And I thank the board and the chair for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Chris, if you'd like to, I know if you have anything to address in those comments.
Sure. Thank the planning board for providing some input tonight. I know Mr. Logan has repeatedly questioned this applicant on the issues you've raised.
I've watched it on...
Yeah, and he's raised it with the traffic engineer and with the applicant. And I believe the traffic mitigation package addresses this concern about children potentially walking from this development to the public recreational facilities down the street. The applicant's position remains that there are sufficient spaces on the site for passive recreation without the development or construction of a playground. Because we, in our experience, have found that communities that are once built don't like the trouble of maintaining a playground. So that's where we wound up on that. Now, the board, I still have that as an open question right here. Playground crosswalk is actually the first one on my list. So, that is still, that is an open item. The board can propose a condition. We can then tell the board whether or not we're going to accept that condition or whether or not there's some other potential solution. But right now, it remains that this is the applicant's proposal. It includes, our proposal includes passive recreation space, open space, and a traffic mitigation package that addresses the concern of people walking down 138. So, that's our, that's what we've proposed. That's where we've ended up after, you know, the six to seven, eight month hearing process. So, where we go from here, I think that's up to the board. Hold on, hold on.
Tim, on your, one of your things Bishop had actually stated, he had no problem putting funding aside to do the playground if the development decided they were willing to do this. If we couldn't get the sidewalks out there, making it safe for the kids. And coming up with an idea right now, like he stated, we're going to do like a little cookout area, things like sitting chair, you know, stuff like that, more for adults and also that kids can play out there and play frisbees at this time. But that was one of my questions we were going to talk about later in there was, was he willing to put funding aside if we were to do a playground in that? Well, he did say in a meeting prior that we would have no problem doing that. It's just going through future developments that he, I mean, past developments that he has done, they really haven't really worked well in the developments and the people complain more than they did. That's something we'll all discuss before the future plan.
Thank you.
Any more public input regarding this matter tonight?
Jeff Looney, Super Fed at Water District. I mean, there's no arguing the fact that you build a beautiful house. My parents live in one of your houses. You build a great house. My concern is, obviously, the water supply has been addressed. I know there was some talk about grants. And the grants are, they're great. And cost isn't an issue yet because we aren't talking about that in forty B. My issue is the supply of water that we have, that we're up against our, we're up against our limit as of now. And that, you know, in conjunction, that is public safety, that is fire protection. My two main concerns are fire protection and safe drinking water. It's not selling water. My concern is not selling water. It is fire protection and safe drinking water. So if it was just selling water, I would want every building in the world to come in here. That's great. We're doing everything we can, you know, to speed up our process to find out how much more we have can give out. I know we have 150...